Mr. Chairman, have a call.
Okay. Very good. Good evening, everyone. As we start our session, if we can start off with roll call.
Alderman Cohen, not present. Alderman Cohen, not present. Mr. Banton?
Present.
Alvez, not present. Commissioner Bradley?
Present.
Commissioner Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Peoples?
Present.
Commissioner Reeves, not present.
Who?
Commissioner Vine?
Present.
And Commissioner Young?
Here.
And Chair Stroud?
Here.
And you have a call? Yeah, well, Chairman, I have a phone. It's good. Obviously, the change, Cohen is in route. It's delayed a little bit. You'll see me a little bit more at the computer than you might normally see. Not because of my confusion, though. It's because Cecilia, the procurement guy, has to choose all the way for a death of her extended family. So, I'll be doing her items. Just like to make note that we have both folks here tonight that are part of items that we're going to pick up, and we have some students here. We have students from local universities and a young woman that's working on her planning degree from Arizona State University. And would you introduce yourself just so we can...
Hello, my name is Delma McMoore, and I, as you mentioned, am studying Arizona State University, and I'm studying with a minor interest in sustainability, and I think I have about three months left, so, thank you.
And you're both in Washington? Tell us what you're... Why you're here and what you do?
My name is Emma. We're both studying chemical engineering, but we're taking a path called environmental public holding. I'm sure environmentalists may study any city public housing. I don't know.
My name is Charlie.
So, you picked us out of the many, because we knew this would be an outstanding experience for us, not just a random occasion. And, sir, are you here for the gentleman next to you? No. You're here tonight for?
I'm here for the alley vacay.
Okay. Kevin?
Yes?
Would you introduce yourself?
I'm Faro. I'm a lady.
And would you please, environmental curious students?
I am. Everyone just speak a little louder, because we did so on it makes it a little difficult for us to hear.
I'm also the executive director of the very college thing. Hi, Chris.
Great, right by my mic. All right, Earl, so we're... Glad you... Two things, a little different things, yes?
We're going to approve the minutes before we do anything else.
Thanks, go ahead.
With that, if we can, first off, welcome to those of you that are visiting us from Arizona. I'm sorry, we tried to turn the weather up, but oh, well. Wait around an hour to change. With that, any movement on these minutes? Move, or second, let's move to second, if can we have a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Banton?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Mr. Vine? Mr. Young?
Aye.
Your brother?
Aye.
The pastor's well heard, voting.
Okay. With that...
Mary Reece?
Aye.
Who's on the phone, please?
Mary Reece. Hi.
Hi.
I'm going to write your name on my notes, so that I know to be sure to call you first. With that, we have Mary Reece's approval and the motion passed. The first item on the agenda is... Are you doing what we've discussed?
I am.
Okay.
I'm free.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. There are two agenda items today regarding the Amendment Number 18 of the City's Strategic Land Use Plan, or SLOUPE as we call it. First is a presentation of a public hearing for the amendment. Recall at the January 7th meeting, I named a presentation. For those who aren't there, I'll just highlight some key points tonight. Following that presentation, there was a public hearing that opened at that session, but due to a technical public notice violation, we need to continue that tonight, so that the public hearing will continue. And following the public hearing, we'll have a vote on the adoption of Amendment Number 18 by the Planning Commission. As I mentioned last time, the Strategic Land Use Plan and the City's General Land Use Plan of the city. Basically, a strategic land use category is assigned to every block in the city. Those categories are shown in the legend there on the left, ranging from neighborhood preservation area to the opportunity area. And the current Strategic Land Use Plan map is shown on the right. A larger scale version of that map is in the corner of the room, so I'd like to look at it. Well, so the SLOUPE was adopted back in 2005. It's a major improvement built in the 1947 Conventance Plan, which was badly outdated. The SLOUPE has been amended 17 times since then, try to do it every year or so. And basically, the amendment changes one category to another. Those SLOUPE changes are based on two criteria. First, in action items that were previously included by the Planning Commission. So, you've seen these items at one point or another, and this has been done since the last update when a development project has been completed. The second item is incremental development projects heard over time. That was a couple of years ago, fifty-five years ago. This is a list of the fifteen items that are included in the amendment. As you can see, each of those changes, a description of the development project, its address, the neighborhood it's located in, its current strategic land use category, what we'd like to change it to, as well as the PDA number for when the Planning Commission first reviewed it. They're not listed in any particular order, and they're scattered throughout the city, but many of them are located on the near south side of the city. And many of the projects involve either the construction of new apartment buildings for the conversion of vacant institutional buildings into residential. So, what I'd like to do is, since I gave a presentation on all fifteen of these at the last meeting, I prefer not to do that. What I'd like to do is just to go over this first one. Refresh your memory as to how we handled it, and if you have any questions about the other one, we have to present those that are loaded on the powertrain necessary. So, on the left is the existing Strategic Land Use Plan map for the first project, and that is the conversion of a school building into apartments at 801 to 25 Ann Avenue at Seventh Street in the Soulard Neighborhood. And currently, that site has two designations. The Western portion is designated institutional, shown in blue, and the frontage along Seventh Street is designated as neighborhood commercial, shown in pink. Well, following the conversion of that school building into apartments, we're proposing that the site be reclassified as the Neighborhood Preservation Area, shown on the adjacent map in yellow, to reflect its new use. These are some photos of the Lafayette Lofts, which is the new name for that apartment complex. The school building is still in that Lafayette store. So, that basically covers that particular use. There's fourteen others, as I mentioned, that are all listed on Attachment A that I previously presented to you at the January meeting. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have about any of these development projects, what their current classification is, what we're proposing that they be changed to, or if not, we could proceed with the continuation of the public hearing from last week. Any questions about any of the fifteen sites, or fifteen of the changes in Attachment A?
So, all of you were present at the last time, but for Rich, so he's been briefed that we're going to do this abbreviated version.
Well, my first is that your question, Commissioner Mary Reece, is there any questions from you on the call first?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner, entertain? Saying none, entertain any reaction? Question, do we need to open or close?
We need to open the public hearing at some point.
It's just moved to reopen.
Reopen, reconsider. Open and continue the public hearing.
So, please, open a second. David, would you call the roll?
Mr. Banton?
Aye.
Bradley?
Good day.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Peoples?
Aye.
Mr. Reeves?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Chair Stroud?
Aye.
Passes with all but one present voting.
With that, we have a list of those that want to speak to this.
So, Roman, why don't you tell everybody what you've gotten today?
Sure. Just by way of background, the public notice ads for this public hearing appeared in two publications for our regulation. That was in the December 18th issue of the City Journal and Daily Record. And background information on the public hearing is also posted on the website on that same date, has been on there since then. We have not received any comments whatsoever, either after the last Planning Commission meeting, or via email, or any other transmittal. So, and it appears that we have nobody signed up for tonight.
So, that's correct, we continue. There were no speakers from last time. Is there anybody... This is our only public hearing, open session, public hearing tonight. Is there anybody that's here that wants to speak on Strategic Land Use Plan update? Nobody had signed up with Michelle, so hearing none. You're welcome to close the session.
Entertaining a motion to close the public hearing session. Close the riveting public hearing. It's been moved to seconded. Call for previous roll, any objections? Hearing none, we've accepted previous roll on the closing of public hearing for the 15504. With that, then, we will entertain a motion to accept 15504. It's been moved to...
No, this is just the item, this is just the public hearing. I'm sorry. What are you accepting?
The recommendation of the acceptance of 15504 and the adoptance, the adopting of that motion?
Sure, just take a pause and do that as a separate item before you go to number five on the agenda. I'm sorry. I hate this, but I... Public hearing closed?
Yes.
Continued it, we opened it, we closed it?
Yes.
Take up a formal vote, and Roman will go jump ahead and do the company's plan, item number five.
Oh, gotcha. That's what I'm... Just my name a little bit out of sequence. Quite a confusion. Okay, so basically, staff is recommending approval of Amendment Number 18 of the Strategic Land Use Plan map listed in Attachment A. Those again are the fifteen items in Attachment A. Any questions? Be happy to entertain them, otherwise, there should be a vote, and if approved, staff will update the map that you've seen ordered on their website and notify the relevant departments. Okay?
Any discussion on this item from the Commission? Roman's very thorough. He said, "Roman's very thorough." We're having a difficult time on, you know...
Someone else join the call? Commissioner Reeves, are you still there? Do you still have a call?
Yeah, she'll probably... Okay. Hearing no questions, I'll let it say it. It's moved, seconded. Can we have a call for both, please?
Uh, Mr. Banton?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Peoples?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Chair Stroud?
Aye.
And all, I am the motion.
Item number three has been approved. The next, the next item we'll be looking at is number four, PDA 019, RZ rezoning, and who's presenting? It looks like Don will be driving on this one.
I'll drive on this one. And so, all the stuff we just did was because of the last Planning Commission meeting where we had forebroad presentation, the public hearing. Our notice was only on one spot in the city's website, two spots, so it's abundant, so I'll keep it careful. And let's do that. So, here is rezoning by petition for a property on Delmar that you saw also in January as a Chapter 99. So, we'll take it up as a rezoning. Again, Craig Heller is here representing the petitioner for the rezoning, and we're amending it, and this is one of those items that Cecilia had prepared, but I'll show you. It's a live site, it's over almost seven acres. It is currently a mix of zoning. It is, as we talked about, a redevelopment plan from last time. It's really old, next year Hospital was. It was reviewed by petition by RFP from the city, from LCOA, by the developer. It has a developer. The site is in the West End Neighborhood, and the great news is that it is going to be redeveloped, as you see here, into a number of residential units, the first base, which is office space. And as we said before, it's referred to in generic as Delmar Divine. We've heard about it through the Chapter 99 block. It does have, you can see quite a bit of underings and a pretty spectacular development, but the zoning needs to be amended to it. I would say the current zoning is not unexpected in that the front half of the property was zoned one way and the rear half was another, even though the Roman straddles that, will keep that up. Strategic Land Use Plan calls for all of it to be specially mixed use, so the redevelopment is in compliance with that, as we also determined for the Chapter 99. There it is in its current condition, and I think that you would be indulgent in realizing that you've also seen this at the last Commission meeting, weren't able to get the rezoning in the Chapter 99, and think that the surrounding area photographs probably are redundant to you, so I'll move on to those, to get to you that the site itself is, like I said, some seven acres. Certainly, pictures of all around and in its character, this will be a redevelopment, as we've approved, the study for the area. And I use that, as you saw, Strategic Land Use Plan has a special mix, that the proposed zoning is in conformity with the city's Strategic Land Use Plan Opportunity Area, and in conformity with best practices, and have a dual zoning. And staff recommends approval of the rezoning, as we also listed Chapter 99. So, with that, if you wanted to know anything more, Craig Heller can find us up at our open. Other than that, we ask your approval.
Well, first, we'd like to say what he'd like before we question. Any additional statements?
I was here last month, I had the opportunity to keep you, and I just find you, this is a Delmar Divine, and the whole condominium, or hotel complex, with mixed use, 150 water free private apartments, and the office space, the co-location facility for the nonprofit sector, and a core tech for nonprofits, and building agency working on some of this use making some of the areas, something to be underway, hopefully with this project, like the owner's home is about a $95 million object. Questions being asked and answered.
With that, I'll first ask the Commissioners, and I'll ask Commissioner Reeves if she has any firsts, so she's not ignored in this part of the gene.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the Commissioners around the table at this point? Just have a curiosity.
How does a parcel get zoned kind of half and half? Is that a traditional underlying zoning, they got built on top of?
Oh, is there a new sign?
I imagine was also...
You need this picture here?
Yeah.
So, we won't go into the strategic debate about this, but often along commercial corridors, there might have been big lots, but only the front portion of it was rezoned for the commercial use and a lot of different things in the back. That's why in most sets of rezonings have a legal description, so it could be a portion of a lot. We have come and worked on a policy where we don't encourage that, and so this dates from the 1950s.
So, the hospital is actually on that whole parcel, okay?
Yeah, okay. Doesn't necessarily mean that it was also smart.
Sure. Lady, has been moved approved? Has been moved to seconded? Any further questions, hearing none? Call for both, please.
Mr. Banton?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
And Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Peoples?
Aye.
Mr. Reeves?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Chair Stroud?
Aye.
Passes with all present voting.
Well, Craig, as you know, we wish you the best on this, but we look forward to this thing doing something. Thank you.
We got to spend a long time last time, okay?
Yeah, we'll just get a minute out, thank you. We are looking now at number five.
Roman, we pushed the magic button, we didn't miss number five? Which was the adoption of the strategic?
Yep.
Sometimes my customer service item of finding that Craig was taken on, and only what's... Here, we are now doing number six. Only full Chapter 99, when they have this one? Chapter 99, finding study, we all find it's over an acre. So, 2019, we've been learning and doing new things at each meetings in a little different fashion. We had our two special meetings in January, and PDA 03-19-RBR was a Chapter 99 redevelopment plan, 5539, purging avenue. That we presented last time, the materials that we had gotten at the last moment from LCOA, it had some aspects to it that we were concerned about. So, it was voted, essentially, although, we have resolutions, it was more complicated than that. You said no to this one. And we're asking you to reconsider that no, and so the first step of these two that you can see that are judging each other is for a member of the Planning Commission that was here last time, so about Rich, and voted on the prevailing side, meaning the side that voted no, to seek that Planning Commission reconsider this redevelopment plan. And did I get that right, David? So, that's what's on the table, is the one of you that voted no to ask for a reconsider of this plan. For those that are in the audience, we have a message for all of the shake hoes that are stuck in traffic and running a little late. So, with that, anybody, please, speak in motion to reconsider.
Okay. Move to second to reconsider the finding study for the purging avenue of parcel, call for both.
Uh, Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Reeves? I think you're gone. Uh, Commissioner Brown, oh, sorry, Commissioner Vine?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Chair Stroud? Alderman Cohen, would you like to vote?
We have, sure. No. There we go.
Motion passes with seven ayes and one of seven, and one no. Do you want to, do you want me to add? Commissioner Reeves, did you catch that we were voting?
Yeah, I got dropped somehow.
Would you like to vote?
Yes.
And what is your vote?
Was the vote on bringing, if we could bring it back up to be heard on again?
Yeah, reconsidering the item.
Yes. My vote is aye.
Okay, so now the motion has... So, eight ayes and one no.
As soon as we start recognizing that she's on the phone, you see what happens.
So, because of that noise and disruption, let's be clear, what we just did is you were on the request of one person from the prevailing side the last time on this redevelopment plan that said no, brought it up for reconsideration, and proposed a reconsideration, and the vote to reconsider it would be if you said yes, we were reconsidering it. We went around the room, we lost, married for a moment, and Alderman Cohen came in in the midst of this. With that all said, is everybody kosher with what you said at the time when you were asked to the vote?
Yes. Now, we will actually hear the study and proposal.
So, that's clear. Okay, great. Again, pretend for a minute, Cecilia, we're looking at this, we've seen it before, so we will, I will be brief, but I will tell you that we're reconsidering the finding study that we previously moved, but it's been amended, and the notations of the amendment are in the body of your resolution. But it really affects that up the finding of blight in this. We realize that in the front line sewer that runs across it, its removal would need to be done in order to develop the property. In other words, you know, one of the things about blight is that we're in the inner city, and it's not a greenfield, and you run into trouble. So, submitted to us from LCOA has been an additional finding of blight, we appreciate that, I think it helps. They are still project, constructing 129 units, and the developer team is here, as is the Alderman. It is, in addition to what we talked about last time, just as in the inner city, it's a very odd shaped parcel, as you can see, in a block that doesn't really have an alley, and it has not been attractive to developers for some time, so the blighting study and redevelopment is making that be possible, using the lawn. You can see it's an aerial view. There is, as noted to the developer, a small sliver of LRA parcel, not identified here, it's really only 25 feet wide. They might seek to investigate as to whether it'd be useful for them or useful to the neighbors to own, so it's not the LRA in the truly, in the area. The Strategic Land Use Plan is causing it to be called Neighborhood Preservation, so this would be in compliance with that. We reviewed that amended blighting study, and against Strategic Land Use Plan, it says it's revised with a designation. We are in favor of the blighting action to revise it in that way. The Board of Aldermen also made note of that change to the blight and the characteristics of the Board of Aldermen, so the staff will recommend you approve the revised.
Okay.
The developers are here, if you have any questions, you can try to ask them.
Well, I will invite them to speak first, before we question if there's any, you know, Alderman, and would you like to introduce to the developers?
Sure, yes, thank you, and thank you for agreeing to hear this project again.
I apologize last month because of the change during the holidays, the meeting just ended up on our calendar, otherwise we, we all would have been here. We did all get the chance to listen to the hearing though, and, um, wanted to be here to address any questions and also provide some additional information, which Don already shared a little bit, which, uh, this, this property has been vacant since early nineteen seventy, it was a school on it at one point, and I called M S D to get some more information on this issue with the sewer, and the, the problem is you've got this, the sewer line that went around the pool, um, so that's what's underground, the pool's no longer there and it's been a surface parking lot now, and this is in the Devolver Place neighborhood, which is, it's not the central west end, it's not Kinkert Devolver, um, it's this other area that's essentially been, it's pretty underutilized, especially if you look at the, the commercials, um, district in that area, underutilized, underdeveloped, um, and so that's why, that's why I'm here, that's why I'm compelled to be here to support this, this project. So it has been a surface lot, the, the building, which you can see from there, it's going to be five stories of residential, and then there's an underground, um, parking, which is very important to the neighbors, I've talked to a lot of the neighborhood groups about that, and that's what makes the infrastructure, underground infrastructure particularly difficult to deal with, is the fact that you've got this lot over there, um, and in order to, to do this development, that's got to be dealt with. So I think it would be a huge improvement to the neighborhood, um, and I, I do have a couple of folks here who can answer any other questions.
Any, is there any general questions, statements you want to make before questions happen? Okay. Well, first off, Commissioner Reeves, are there any questions you have on the phone?
No questions.
Okay, uh, commissioners at the table?
I was gonna inquire about what the parking requirement is for the great shield.
So one, one thing we've been working on, we'll talk to the great shield, I also think I can do developers about how we can maximize bike parking or there is a metro station nearby, and I think we have some opportunities here to purge people from here, transit. What's the ratio of, yes, to get down to?
One to one.
Oh, is it one to one?
And also with the, the project that's already occurred with the same developer, part of that agreement was to let some of the neighbors choose different parking, so they, they work with the neighborhood to offset parking that they may have lost, they put, that was a parking lot, they took it to their other location as well. So they, uh, worked on those spots, and when we toured it, and then there's four or five bicycle locks, it's a lot.
You own the property? You're, you're, you're the owner of the property?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Young.
Uh, what size is this, how fine that runs under the traffic?
Twelve inches, throughout, services to condos on water. And then it's used, so it's not like we're just digging up dead pipe, so we've got to be reconfiguring, because it's being used right now.
Don, can you look back to the photo where you had the area hatched out? So it's, the property in itself, or the, the development perspective, which you can tell from the outline, but it's one of the worst. Um, I believe the L C O A park holds a sliver in the upper right-hand corner, um, that parking lot has, um, shoot, easements, so those spaces have been used by the condo owners to the right. That driveway that goes back is actually owned by the developer, however, he can't develop it because it has easements that the condo building can be inaccessible. Um, and there's also easements that run the back of the property for, and where the trees are and all that, so there's a lot of unusable site in addition to infrastructure to the sewer, um, and obviously you can't shut down the driveway or remove that parking because people can't get off, so there's a lot of developments that are yet to be made, meaning somewhere it's not a greenfield, you can't put a crane up, so that in addition to, on the driving of the hall, it's a lot of site challenge in addition to what's under the ground.
Where is the sewer line located on the property?
I didn't see it, it's literally, um, not where the T is on the map. It's approximately starts about right here, comes, right here, comes down, goes over, and then comes out, it really runs right to the middle of the property, you can't develop anything on it.
How are you reconfiguring this?
It's just gonna move to the edge, similar to the double zoning, it's probably one of the best things in fifty.
What are we talking about?
Um, gonna go probably around this way or that way on the edge of the property.
What's the apartment distance?
From the, from the front to the back.
And new sewer line that you have to lay, what's the distance of, you know, the, the lengths of property?
There has to be a definition on there.
What are you looking for?
Definition of lot, uh, size of the lot.
It's, uh, it's one point two two seven acres.
Well, I, I'm sorry, with the footage, the.
This has gotta be at least a hundred and eighteen, this is, this is a, for, that's about a hundred and eighteen, I mean, two hundred feet, maybe?
So has there been a cost, a cost assessment of moving that line?
So how may I understand that number?
Wait, what?
Real quick, because you guys are digging already for underground parking, correct?
Yes.
So it's not like you're having to dig extra to potentially remove the sewer line, you're already gonna be digging a big hole in the ground, you're just gonna be relocating it for which?
So five hundred thousand.
Thousand dollars to move the sewer line that doesn't include excavation seems exponentially high.
To get it out, relocate it, and you can't obviously use the same new one, so those are numbers, and then it's all infrastructure, so they're gonna have to, all of these houses are already being along with it, so it can't be set off, so in terms of putting it back in, and I think they may put in at eighteen inches or something, I mean, M S D's involved in any other infrastructure.
What do you think it's gonna be? Okay, just based on my experience as an engineer, this is probably exaggerated.
Commissioner Ben, we've got a question you got.
So is the, the truck line the only reason you guys are seeking additional tax abeyment for this?
We're seeking blight, I'm sorry, you guys, we're seeking high tax bait in front of the law.
Well, is it?
So we're here for blight.
Okay.
And so we're here because of that issue, well, just the side of itself, um, similar to the project I was here last week about at the hotel downtown, and, um, blight, a new issue that's been investigated, and I appreciate that, but, um, we gave more detail than what you have asked for in the past, and it is a significant cost, and it's a significant cost that's already been done by the developers, and it's, and plans and everything else, and acquisitions going forward.
Question, Don, first for you, and then I'll, a question for the developer. On the blighting of report, the second point says subject to secure, can you define what that, what that means first? The, uh, second point, sub, uh, subject project is secured as one of the criteria? In our packet's page fifteen, it's exhibit seven.
So, so let's do a reminder of what this is. So, so you have our staff report, this is what's provided from L C O A, uh, which they originally had in November, they revised it, uh, and that attachment is an attachment prepared by L C O A that's about to fly. And so, but, uh, so number fifteen, which, which one are you looking at?
The second one says secured, I'm just trying to understand what the definition of secured for this line item is. Okay, I just want to be sure that's which figure. Okay, then this is fine. The next one says that it's been used as illegal dumping, uh, and transient and rat, and rat infested. I'm looking at the graph, and it seems that there's something under, there's a building or something on this property, but we're not seeing it, it's not been discussed.
No, this is a surface parking lot right now.
That's what this is?
Yes, at one point there were tennis courts there, and at one point there was a, a pool that I mentioned before, but right now it's a surface lot, a surface parking lot.
Are you talking about the, like, little sheet, I have a feeling that was over, more than a cool house and swimming area, but it wasn't developed, it was like there.
No actual purchase. Okay, that's what I'm trying to, yeah.
Yeah. Because you're referring to like that, right, the lower.
Well, I'm not sure if it's corresponding to that or not, okay.
So in your packet, with this being provided as an update from L C O A, one of the things that they did not include in what they sent it to us in January fourth was the sustainability plan, and it was mentioned as an attachment, but it's not attached, it's not attached. So you have it as a complete item from, from, um, L C O A to you, uh, it was incomplete before, uh, we've talked about, uh, some of those, uh, aspects of things that have, that brought to our attention from the developer, uh, in, in the document.
Any other questions from the commission for either the Alderman or the developer at this point?
We don't have anyone from L C O A here.
No.
I left them on that today. Is that form, that's a good, that's a complete?
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
So, experience is the developer?
Correct.
And then are they also going to be managing the property as well, or are they another property manager that they have to operate to?
Currently I believe they do it, but they may start out towards now.
So, because I knew, they also own the building of the property, are you experienced?
No, no, I'm, I'm grabbing some of the details.
Okay.
And project, we're all okay to start, we've got the details.
So, uh, so there's actually no one from experienced?
That's correct, yeah. Uh, nor do I usually bring my clients to these things with any development, nor have I ever had, like last week or last month before you developed the location.
So, let me study redevelopment. Yeah, well, it's difficult sometimes though, Don, when you have, uh, other information as well to factor into the consideration.
Some of the information that's stated at last week was incorrect, it was taxes, uh, we want to start rehashing those issues, the taxes were paid by the other property.
Yeah, so, um, it's not taxes per se, but, uh, you know, this is a thirty-one million dollar development project. The reason that you're asking us to blight this is because of a sewer lateral that supposedly going to cost five hundred thousand, um, which we have an engineer at the table that doesn't even believe that would be a fraction of that amount. So I also didn't even realize that it was experienced who was owning this and potentially, you know, outsourcing their management operations to a group called S T L Citywide, which I have a longtime acquaintance of mine who, uh, has had ongoing issues with the property across the street with regard to management, where they've had their water off, hot water has been off for forty plus days, uh, you know, woke up with one of their employees in the spare bedroom.
I'm sorry, pardon me?
So there's been, there's also, well, and, and I've encouraged him to do so, that there's, you know, I mean, there's significant maintenance issues with the apartment building that they still manage across the street, and here we are, you know, in a neighborhood that, um, with no offense to the Alderman from the twenty-eight ward, has had a wine bar on it, you know, since, you know, before I even moved into the city, and, you know, you know, you can say that the commercial district over there isn't thriving, but it's a hell of a lot better than some other places of the city where there's a thirty percent vacancy rate, you know, uh, so I just, I, I have to question whether or not, you know, we're going to go down the path of looking at the, uh, so in the past, when we've had large scale developers that have come before the city for, uh, these types of incentives and blighting, there's been, um, I'll call it a promise that there's going to be something exponentially better, you know, made upon that site. And so I, that plus, you know, where's the tipping point with these communities in terms of, you know, blighting versus non-blighting, um, that should be made, made available here? So, you know, I, I have to at least raise some concern, um, because we did just go through a lighting study in regards to the property across the street not too long ago. Does anyone know how long ago that building across the street was built?
Three to four years ago.
I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't that long.
Yeah.
So, um, I know it was probably during nineteen ninety, or down at the board of Alderman. You know, and so, uh, how many other vacant lots are there in this neighborhood?
Again, I don't know, I don't know the number of vacant lots, I mean, it's been there for numbers of years. Yeah, and I mean.
So we also had, in the last mayoral election, which was happened two years ago, there was a issue during the campaign that came up where there was a property, not unlike this, there was a corner lot, it was situated, I believe it was on the west end neighborhood, I'm not sure if it was on the, or Devolver, but, uh, you know, it has also been vacant for twenty plus years, and there was nothing on it, and we went through a lighting study, and then it became a, a huge topic during the last mayoral debate. So, um, it's a whether or not we should be, you know, um, lighting properties such as the, in the central corridor. So I am curious, I mean, does anyone from Planning Commission or S L D C know how many other vacant lots there are in this neighborhood, or what the vacancy rate in this neighborhood is?
So, I'll let the Alderman answer that.
Thanks, I'm just gonna say there is one right around the corner, um, I know that there's a vacant lot on the corner of, so, you know, in water, um, I don't, I don't fully remember, but I just wanted to get there.
So a couple of points to make is that this is a redevelopment plan, these developers may, may come here or may not. It's been a vacant lot for, as we've now known, for a long time, and not done by the marketplace forces, so the redevelopment plan does cause that to have an incentive for it to be redeveloped by these guys or somebody else. That's long overdue in the neighborhood. Is it, uh, on a scale, uh, a quarry, no, it is a vacant lot in the long term, uh, they've now reported from L C O A some of the things that are more important before, well, have some cost to it, but it has impeded development in the past, you passing the redevelopment plan and the blighting gives that attractiveness to report to be developed.
But is it necessary in order for it to be developed at this juncture? So.
Point is to be, it has.
I know before us is the case of the blighting, but that's, but that's, so.
Well, I think it's also unfair to compare, you know, nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties city of St. Louis to today's city of St. Louis, especially this neighborhood.
So this is the, um, probably the best real estate market, or certainly my career, um, this project, you know, again, I know we're here to talk about blight, but, you know, since we're talking about other things, I mean, it, it scored four point seven five out of five on the S L D two, S W C scorecard.
In terms of the project worthy enough for its return on investment directly with regards to.
Correct.
And so, um, it's, it's a great investment for the city. We missed this cycle, I mean, I, I fully expect this thing to be sitting there like it is, I mean, this isn't A Street and B Street, this isn't the west end, you know, it's, it's a site that's got some real challenges, it's not a slam dunk, and it will not go for without the support.
And your question, Charlie, for you. Sorry, um, the T O D development that's going, that's pending at Devolver, um, that's, that you're pending, is that blighted?
I'm sorry that I know nothing to come before the city, you know, the project.
I feel like that, you know.
I, I don't.
You don't know. Um, I, to my knowledge, I don't think they are blighting it, um, they're pursuing too many incentives, but my, my question is this, and I'm a resident of this central facility, and I'm curious, um, I believe that that T O D development will be a game changer for the entire area, um, and I think market forces may change, and that said, I have been looking at that awful eyesore vacant lot in what is otherwise a pretty dense neighborhood for a long time, I, I have no idea what it costs to redirect a pipeline underneath, I have no knowledge of that kind of thing, um, but if, if, imagine if there was no pipe to reroute, would there still be a need to blight the site? If it's just the pipeline alone, five hundred?
I think it adds significantly to, to your normal blight, that, um, this is an amazing conversation, I've been here for ten years, here, I've never had this in depth on a blight, ever, um, I would. I lived here last month with a totally different project, and that word was never said here. So this is great that you guys are concerned about that, and I know there's other concerns, and they're very valid. I think that adds to it significantly, because the size of it adds to it. Doing construction, there are limited hours and times, the neighbors have weighed in at the board of adjustment on that, so that, traffic will have to be directed all times on the road. So it's just a unique site as far as that goes. Now, the blight question, I mean, I've never seen a piece of powder stainless that has never not been blighted. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but that's a fact. You've got every bit of the city, so...
I was just gonna add, in addition to...
Talk to Aldi.
I think developing this property because of the lack of alley access, and because of the traffic issues in this neighborhood, the inside of it, and because that driveway next to it, I think all of those cumulative, you know, are creating...
Commissioner Brown?
What's my question? I'll take a blank. In terms of like the market forces and all of it, with all of those considerations and going into it, odd shape aside, and all the externalities of it, you know, I think Lewis doesn't have a strong market, so even if you're, the site is perfect, because there's the problems that is with it, you can save, push development somewhere else, not gonna push it north. Unfortunately, the neighborhood is close to the Oliver, so it suffers from the stainless racism, where you have it on Central Western, and you have it on Clayton, Pinker, the Oliver, and they won't come up around Forest Park, so that's why you start seeing some of the vacancy, you start seeing the struggling retail corridor, and it just sits there. I mean, we've been expanding in St. Louis for several years now, and this property continues to lack. You look at Central West End, where they can take it down the building, and there's enough demand there, really, the market forces are a lot more competitive than this. I think it's, and I agree, I'm glad you were having this conversation and diving down into it, but knowing the things with market, I don't know if that would ever be developed enough to be matched, but I really don't. There is not enough demand that's gonna push overcoming those obstacles.
That's why I'm asking what the occupancy is in the neighborhood, what's the occupancy at right on the building across the street?
I don't think...
I mean, doesn't sound like it's an issue of demand.
From my standpoint, I think I'm looking for reasons to say yes to this. And, you know, when I look at this application, as Shane has said, it's in a neighborhood that's in a pretty good place. Maybe you're looking at the specific property and thinking, we really need to sell this specific property, but when you look overall, like comparatively, and, you know, I don't know if you guys want to give us some more guidance on blighting, but, you know, when I look at this property, this is not something that I look out in St. Louis on and say, this property needs to be blighted. So I'm looking for reasons to say that there are extenuating circumstances that cause this property to have considerations for development. And, you know, a twelve-inch line moves at a few hundred feet, you know, I'd have to see something from somebody at MSD to say that's gonna be half a million dollars, that's beyond shocking to me.
Legally, blighting, I mean, you'll see infrastructure pictures, stuff and so, other companies do this all the time on, on big investment projects. That can be from broken curbs to infrastructure problems, I've seen trash on areas, the law is pretty loose on blight, I don't think anybody can disagree with that.
When I look at the pictures that are included in this from the neighborhood, this is not an area that I would, I would...
Likewise, and just like five hundred, Keene Highway, I would say that neighborhood's not blighted either.
Well, I'm new, so forgive me, I'm learning, but these are questions that I'm asking, and I know things are changing in St. Louis, and I think, you know, the considerations for blighting have been, as Shane mentioned, a political conversation lately, and so this is something that I think we need to consider more in depth, and, you know, I, again, I'm new here, so I'm just...
And I need to put it down, I could go into the blight part, but...
Couple of things I'm gonna... Is one, excuse me, in the past, when we've been disappointed that maybe in the stream to us, we haven't gotten all the information that we wanted, and would like that corrected, we'll send a letter to LCOA to say, as you go through your work, make sure you do these X, Y, and Z things. That's one thing to know that we've done in the past. Two, the definition of blight in Missouri is a really low threshold for it to happen. And one of the things that happens is people don't want to think about where they live as being blighted. But of course, in the Missouri definition, there are areas that are blighted in downtown Clayton, and areas outside of the city, and in quite a broad spectrum of things. So, seeing this as it's oddly configured, how it has not had a development proposal for quite a while, there are sort of a series of other minor things that can be declared, blighted, and withstand the legal test when it stands.
So, if I may, the, so there's the legal definition of what constitutes blight, but, and I don't know if this is a question for David, Dave, or Don, so, but underneath the state statute, that also provides for bodies such as this to determine whether or not, you know, it's deemed blighted, right? So they provide a definition, but it also provides that this body would...
That's only your call.
So, so it's not, it's not a requirement that if blighting, or by the definition of blighting, if something could qualify for it, that it automatically, this body has to vote to be blighted, right? So just by definition that it... So, underneath state law, even though something matches the definition of blighted, state law does not require this body to find it blighted, it still requires us to vote whether or not we determine it to be blighted.
So, so, great. So that leaves me, what I'm going to say in this language, is we are staff of making a recommendation, and asking you to deem this property blighted, and in compliance with the strategic management.
Okay. So I'm just going, since it was brought up, you know, when the vote to blight downtown Clayton was taken, I didn't feel great about that. I wouldn't feel great about this. I know you weren't on that board, I wasn't either, but I am on this one, so...
There are a couple of things that were being said around the table, let's be sure. It is, A, not a project-specific issue that we're dealing with, the question is, does our threshold for what we deem, I think Shane and Shane Beth, as blighted, the baseline? As you said, everything's gotten blighted, but does that make it correct? No. We, just because it fits the qualification as a body, do we deserve to do that? We will entertain whatever motion the commission sets, so...
I have another question first, Doc. I went back, because in, in the packet for the, it says that the discussion for this was in the January fourteenth meeting, and I just wanted to refer to what the discussion was last time. I did not see that in the meeting minutes.
It was January seventh.
It was the seventh, it was the fourth.
It's the fourteenth in here, but it says the January fourteenth in the, in the actual
document.
Yes, go ahead, please.
That needs to be updated.
I'm looking, me back up, Commissioner Young, was that your question?
I was just looking for that.
Okay, go ahead.
So, kind of explaining what I, we're looking more at neighborhood level in terms of blight, and we've kind of established that it is doing better than what that seems as normal city or south city, there's no denying that. If you go on version on the other side of the Oliver, there was a house, it either exploded or caught on fire, it's like four houses over from the Oliver, two houses over, it was at least a year.
Oh, there were two houses.
Two give or go?
Yeah.
And they're boarded up, and once it's been that way for over a year, at least, in memory of the winter, it wasn't just earlier this year, right? Those are staff, there's some demand, too, because they're not...
I don't know if you can make that correlation between, between those...
I don't think that's fair.
I think I love the... Very different. I would say, there's no doubt, blight varies from neighborhood to neighborhood, and we're not here to say it's the same in North St. Louis, or in the twenty-fifth ward, or the twenty-eighth ward, or the twenty-sixth and the fifteenth ward. It's a judgment, and you have to look at it as a whole. This project, I think, has more than a lot due, and I think, as far as the statute goes, I think it's clear that it meets that, but again, it's you guys with the body, and it's your...
Commissioner Brown? So, I hate this project, just to be honest. I hate that we're in this position. I really wish the state wasn't so lazy about its definition of blight, but it is, and so we find ourselves in this scenario time and time and time and time again. Technically, it is blighted, logically, I don't think that it's blighted, but, you know, those are two different standards. I appreciate what Randy said about, from his neighborhood experience, about what this might do, the, you know, transitional project, and adding density to a neighborhood that is adjacent to strength, is not weak necessarily on its own, but, you know, this site hasn't seen development pressure, I think that is something to take into consideration. If this were a different area, the road, Central West End, Skincare, DeBoliver, I think you would have seen the development pressure, so I don't want to discount that fact. I also want to put in the context that we're asking, they're asking for ten years of tax abatement, which, in the grand scheme of things, ten years of tax abatement on a thirty-plus million dollar project is gonna be helpful to finishing up the neighborhood. In my opinion, it's worthwhile. I would suggest that, you know, future projects, developers be put on notice that this is happening, and this conversation is happening, and lots of people are dissatisfied with the request for public subsidies, particularly in neighborhoods that don't seem like they need it as much. But I don't think this is the craziest thing that's ever come before us, given by a stretch. I mean, we voted, and I think this is a whole different body, but we did, I mean, we gave blight into Union Station in the middle of downtown because of sidewalk tracks, and I'm not suggesting that we would have done that now, because that was a number of years ago, but developers frankly are still used to being able to lean on the city first and fourth when they're putting together these projects, and I'm not saying that's right or that it should continue as it has, but I do believe that there is a growth period and a transitional period where developers are gonna have to get used to doing this on their own, but I don't know that it's worthwhile to pull the carpet out from underneath this project right now, if it's not gonna happen, in my two cents.
So, you know, what Patrick just said, I think the arguments that were raised here are valid and really important, and I think they could go actually both for and against the blight, because on the one hand, as we said, developer place by all outward appearances looks like a neighborhood that's kind of has some momentum, and especially with the new TOD project, there's interest in the neighborhood and transit development. That said, it also underscores the fact that even despite that new demand, or any adjacent properties that look pretty attractive aesthetically, that this lot, this particular parcel has not been targeted for redevelopment, anything serious. I've heard a couple things quoted that have come and gone, but for whatever reason, they weren't viable projects, so which leads me to believe that there is something about this site that is just really unattractive, unappealing to developers, and it is a glaring missing link in the streetscape of an otherwise very dense, and what should be a very transit-friendly neighborhood. And, so I'm gonna, I guess reluctantly agree with everything that Patrick outlined. Reluctantly, so it's not immediately, it's, no, the one, we're really, if the goal is to, you know, to keep stuff moving, and, then I think this is something I can, I can get behind.
So, my two cents is, just because it has less tax abatement than some other projects doesn't mean less good, it's good. I think this neighborhood is a strong neighborhood, and I think that we've been hearing for a long time now, residents of the city of St. Louis demanding a change in how blighting and incentives are done in this city. I think we as a commission have an opportunity to help shape that discussion and really listen to those concerns of the citizens of the city of St. Louis. And, you know, I think it's disingenuous to say also, that just because the, the site has sat vacant for a long time, that there isn't gonna be something that changes in the future that's going to make it more attractive. You know, development changes, incentives change, pressures change every day, you know, I don't think it's fair to say that you're not going to see potential pressures to develop this site ten years down the road, so...
I mean, I hear what Alderwoman said, so...
So, you know, I mean, I view this as an opportunity to, I don't say pull the rug out from, from this developer, but, you know, but to put pressure on, on folks to really think about what is necessary to declare a lot blighted.
I would like to shine into the disingenuous is a strong term, but we can only go off of what we have today, so...
Commissioner Young? Commissioner Reeves, get ready for yours.
I know you're putting the carton of horse on horse, I know this is not related to blight, but I do want to ask a question. You know, maybe this is more of a question for those of you on the, with the city, but, you know, if we're talking about a ten-year tax abatement on this type of property, what kind of incentive is that?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, have you ever quantified the value of that?
That would have been on the report from Jonathan Ferry.
Correct.
Do you remember what that was?
The dollar?
Yeah.
If I pay, I'm speaking on behalf of the developer and dealing with the city, I agree with the conversation that you're saying, Jake, but first off, on this point, SLDC's not here, because that's the gateway to my client coming in.
Yeah.
And the first question should be, do you need incentives, and also, blight initiation, how is this gonna be blocked? That should be, but it's not, and it hasn't been, and I think it should, and not, but changing it midway now on behalf of one client, I don't feel is fair at this point, obviously I have a finite view, but nonetheless, they play by the rules, and now suddenly, first off, we start off on the wrong back, we didn't even know this thing, meeting was here, nobody was there, so that was strike one. Strike two is now, this is being considered, and my client's never had a chance to describe that more, or been told that, honestly. And, and if that's the sole issue, then, then, then I hope you guys continue to do that. Now, conversely, I'll say, last month I was here, the word, the word blight never came up once, it didn't. I mean, we talked about projects and the incentive, that worked.
Jeffrey Boyce is one of them.
No, it was brought up.
Look, I mean, I can only speak to my client, you know, with that one project I made, I apologize, I was only here for that. But that, it didn't, and, and so I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I don't, we don't take it that way. However, I don't feel it's proper and or fair to now decide to institute it this way. On the front end, absolutely, and, and that's, and then there's also ask those in board of all the knowledge, but they, trust me, this is not, we've never allowed to clear anybody I ever talk to, but it needs to become from city folk. It's disingenuous and not fair at all for folks to find out that it's not dying dollar on this issue.
Well, the conversation's healthy, let's be clear, I mean, to have it, because I think part two, we have, there's been too many rubber stamps, and I think questions are not going to harm the process. And yet, I know you feel like you're the, you're the target of this new process, but it's not. I think we've seen this coming in, somebody mentioned earlier from previous conversations.
You guys have the numbers of, for taxes, so the net revenue of the city over the first ten, four years of the project was three hundred and fourteen thousand, eight thirty-four. The net revenue of the schools, this is an eighty-five percent tax pay, one hundred and ten thousand, one eighty-seven, and then the estimated net revenue of the city over thirty years is three million, seven three seven, nine five seven. That's a fair distinction, I didn't mention that, it's eighty-five percent tax abated, not one hundred percent tax abated, and it's for ten years, and so, to be fair, that's a new tactic, right? Reducing it from a hundred percent, or even doing, a lot of people do... Reducing it from 100% or even doing, a lot of people do, 100 and then for 10 years or in another 10 years for 50. I mean, having 10 years for 85% is not a complete tax abatement, it's a partial.
The other thing to remember is that tax abatement is not considered to be a preferred use, certainly a very, very important issue.
Last question to be from, was from Commissioner Reeves, does she have any?
No questions.
Okay, okay, all of them, and I'll let you have the last one of the, oh, and let Don have some too.
Go ahead, Don.
You can go.
I just want to say, this is the first redevelopment project that I have brought to the planning commission, because I have been very aware of the conversations that are going on in the city, to what they've only been in positions we've been to have anyway, but I am very aware of the conversations that we're having as a city about how we allow the incentives and what we determine to be blighted. And to me, what I think is really important is that we agree on the criteria and that we all play from the same playbook. And my understanding of how the process works and why I told, when developers came to me, I said, well, first we need to get SLDC, we need to go through this process, we'll see how it comes out, and, and go through the steps. And so I think, I just kind of want to echo a little bit of what, what Dave's saying, is that I feel like if we of the city are going to say, this is the only way to sort of development, then we need to agree that that's the process and this is the criteria and move forward. And so it's, it's very frustrating to me to feel like, this, this is the criteria and this is the process. And then again, I feel like, well, we're going to determine things kind of based on some subjective criteria about how we think this neighborhood compares to this neighborhood over here, when in actuality, maybe we should be comparing it to, to Clayton, or Toowoody, or Tu, you know, two other areas. So it's, I guess that's just some thought to have moving forward, is that it would be really nice to have an agreement on what the criteria are and, and stick with them. And I think that's going to benefit all of us, including the board.
So, a couple things. Um, one, developers don't, unless we do a chapter 353, which is what we do. Developers start at LCRA, and LCRA sends us a document that's a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for a specific site. So as we have this dilemma about the breadth of what blighting might cover, we'll get back to that in a second, is it's a redevelopment plan that is also to prescribe a community benefit. It's because, although as Roman says, we're not working on specifically the amount of tax abatement, we are putting a redevelopment plan in place that will serve as, incentives will be there, but it serves as having the redevelopment objectives within the plan, the urban design guidelines within the plan, and it forces a design review on the product that ever comes forward on this site. Meaning, if these guys want to let, the next developer, the team, would have to comply with the design standards that are set up and the redevelopment plan has been objectives for the area and for the neighborhood. So remember that. It is, it is also doing and getting us a product at this site that hasn't been developed. So with that, I would remind folks of that context. The fact that it is on the agenda, was on the agenda, has two items. I set the agenda, so I put it on the purposely for the vote to reconsider, and I put the reconstructed one on here for, for reconsideration. In what we've heard about the discussion, I will say, and staff would recommend, that you would deem the site as blighted, we've had a talk of criteria and whatnot, but deem the site blighted and recommend the redevelopment plan as also being in compliance of the strategic land use plan.
Thank you, Don. I will entertain any motion from the commission. Move to approve. Has been moved to second, and may we have a roll call, both please? For the move and approval, accepting the blighting report on this...
No, no, you're accepting the resolution, you're going to deem it to be blighted and a redevelopment plan complying to the strategic land use plan.
Alderman, Crone?
Pat.
Uh, Commissioner Bannon?
Nay.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
No.
Commissioner Reeves?
Aye.
Commissioner Vine?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
No.
Chair Strather?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
No, you have to come back to the...
Oh, oh, you passed, I'm sorry. Uh, Alderman?
Uh, well, five ayes. Since there are passes already, I'll just...
How many ayes are there right now?
Two, three, four, please.
Five, three, and question mark.
Cast your vote, we'll, we'll get the...
I'll vote no. I already voted to go up to the board, Alderman, why not vote no?
He voted yes at the board.
So he votes, no one's to celebrate.
So the motion passes with five ayes and four nays.
Keep David on his head.
So, uh, take a breath. Uh, I think we all can say that our discussion intends concerns for all of it. It's not necessarily all being focused and communicated and embraced as broadly by the heads of this group, uh, but it is issues of us going forward as a city, um, important. So glad that, uh, don't mind putting a little pressure on David, attorney for bending developers, um, so.
Pressure needs to go to the, the front door. I mean, really, the city, that's where the pressure is. My turn to interrupt now, but thank you for this.
I think we'd like to see a day.
Thank you, Alderman, for being present. Thank you.
You're doing good, Rick.
Yes. The next item, Don, are you presenting?
Yeah, I'm presenting.
Okay.
You know, I'm presenting.
Well, I could, I could be wrong.
People know I'm not the happiest, so let's go be seated each way and some of these things. Anyway, here we go. Uh... We have one more action item. Um, and it's correct, we have one more action item, other than that, everything's delegated items. This is a blighted vacation. It's a straightforward one, so I'm going to show you. The petitioner is here. Remember, a street vacation is something that goes through much of the city bureaucracy, uh, goes to the street department, it comes to us, it will be acted on by the Department of Public Service, and it will also be automatic, uh, action with a public hearing at the Board of Alders. We do not conduct a public hearing on it. Uh, it's a portion, a northern portion of a, what I like to call a T alley, um, in North St. Louis. It's along Grand, here's, here's the alley right there. So it's, it's, it, here's the rectangular block. The authorization of this block is, there's parcels here, parcels here, and parcels here. Uh, and the, the alley is here, behind these parcels, and you can now, cannot traverse the alley, come this way, go this way, or go that way. The recommendation or the desire is the petitioner from Two Grace Baptist Church. Uh, they own the parcel shown here. Uh, Reverend Jonathan Davis is here, waiting patiently for us to, to, to see us act on this. And there you can now see in the plan view is that this property is theirs, this is theirs, and this is the alley to be vacated. So the, the vacation is in accordance with things from the Jeff Vanderloo Plan. It's in accordance with the strategic land use plan in that we allow this type of spur of an alley to be, to be vacated. With that, I, I'll say, uh, that it would be, um, interesting, and, I think informative, to hear from Reverend Davis. This is a, to be a newly constructed church for his congregation. The congregation was previously located on Cass Avenue, uh, and, and the congregation was there for some hundred years?
Dad was giving, um, we were there for 60.
For 60 years? His dad was the, the minister there. I'll describe it as being on the north side of Cass, east of Jefferson. Uh, if that building was still to stand at, at the moment, that church, uh, it would have a 97, 96.53 acre backyard, meaning the property was acquired as part of the city's endeavor, of our NGA. Uh, and with many, um, aches in people's hearts and remembrance of the past, uh, the church was purchased, uh, to be relocated. And, uh, I'll let Reverend Davis just tell the story of arriving here.
Well, I'd like to say thank you all for, um, your time and consideration. I bring you greetings from the Grace Missionary Baptist Church. My dad was the founder, 1956, we were one of the original churches of Pruitt-Igoe. And, uh, my dad was very instrumental in, um, loving the community, along with my mom and several, uh, key members, uh, from Pruitt-Igoe. Uh, we were, um, able to watch my dad, uh, speak to many people that lived in the housing project, and, uh, they were so concerned that, um, the projects were going to be torn down, but he was so compassionate, uh, he said that, we're going to be here when they begin to build this back up. And so he did get to see that, he got to look to be 101 years old. And, uh, he passed the mantle to me 14 years ago, and, uh, he just wanted to continue the work, uh, in community. So he established himself in the church as a pillar of the community, one of the original churches of Pruitt-Igoe. And we just want to continue to be a part of, um, of, um, what God is doing, to, you know, to share, uh, the vision that he had, and, uh, we want to continue that by uplifting, uh, this new community, uh, that, that we are, uh, looking forward to serving. So we would, uh, welcome your consideration.
Just a comment, so thanks for what you're doing. Um, in my experience over the years, churching the mallies and destroying a community and neighborhood, and so what you're doing is outstanding, folks, thank you.
What's, uh, what's your plan for the new, new church? What, what plans do you have?
Well, we would like to, um, be a beacon of light. Uh, we, uh, look at the community and see that there's not too, uh, too much to offer there. We see a lot of prostitution, we see a lot of people walking the streets, aimlessness, homelessness, uh, drugs, and so many things. Uh, we believe that if we can share the vision of what, what God wants and what, what, um, he can make capable, uh, in the lives of, of so many, that, uh, it would uplift the community. With this building, we want to have services, we'd like to, um, have, uh, events for the community that allow them to have after-school, uh, study periods, uh, a way for them to further their education by taking ACT testing, uh, things of that nature. We would like for it to be, um, the host for, uh, repasses, uh, a gathering place for the community, if you will. We want it to be a spiritual place, but at the same time, we want the people to, to see that as a landmark, an anchor to the community, that, uh, they can call, um, their own. So we want to spread love through this facility, we want it to be well-lit, and, uh, we want for, uh, the thread that, that, that just goes through the environment and everyone that comes through it to be loved.
And that's your, your ministry? What about the edifice? It's, uh, what are you, what are you planning on, size-wise, capacity?
Well...
Do, one or two structures, or what's your?
Well, it's just, um, it's going to be 4,000 square feet, basically an auditorium, uh, double as, I think it, it can double as a meeting place, but it will have a stage for the pulpit and so forth, and, uh, room for a flyer, uh, room for, um, any types of, uh, meetings that could actually, uh, take place in this.
And the site planning, of course, for the overall site, will be done through other processes.
I'm just, I'm just asking as a church, in church development, you know, capacity difference, you know, I have a special interest in, in religious edifice. And I applaud the work, no, I'm just going, and I know, and I know the community you're serving, that any, you know, any good thing happens is a good thing, so. With that...
Are you, are you vacating another building that you're currently...
Well, uh, we are, we're occupying, uh, what used to be the old St. Patrick Parish on Seventh and Cole. Uh, we're, uh, we have favor with, uh, the owners of this particular building, so we're ready to space. So we're not sure exactly, because they've offered us an opportunity to, uh, to continue there for as long as we desire, but at the same time, we're looking forward to the same facility.
And that old, the old church...
The old church was torn down to make room for the, uh, new GA, NGA, uh, project.
And they just relocated to this temporary position, and this becomes your new, your new home that, that you're in.
Yes.
Timeframes?
Well, um, we're looking forward to sometime by the end of this year, this construction to be completed. We've been in our current facility, uh, at the, uh, St. Patrick Parish, going on almost three years now, a little bit over two and a half years.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Perry?
Commissioner Young wanted that one.
What's favorite issue?
The first one. The first one, that came to my mind.
Uh, Alderman Crone?
Aye.
Commissioner Bannon?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Reeves? Okay, uh, not present. Uh, Commissioner Vine?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Chair Strather?
Aye.
Motion passes with all terms.
Uh, members of planning and the rest of the items tonight are delegated items, one thing or the other. Uh, and we have nothing else to report, no information report, no need for a special session. And our next meeting is scheduled for a regular time on March 6th, 2019.
All right, folks, just, I know we're having these spirited conversations of blighting and, and I think it's good that we're having them, because they keep coming up more and more. And I, I just want to know, if not personally, it's about simply the project, I guess the blighting review in, in entirety, but as, I think as you said earlier, we're simply following the guidelines of what the state has placed in order, and it's either yes or no, or we, it, does it fit A, B, and C?
We've seen it all too many times with the city, and that is, in that different agencies tell people different things. And then they get all the way down the road and they get to the board, I'm appointing people, and the expectations are different. And so what I would recommend, my humble opinion is, whatever we all decide we want to do at the end is great, somebody needs to share that with us, SLDC, so they can shepherd these people in the right direction, so we don't all look like we're on different planets.
To that point, is, would it be proper of us in a, at a future meeting to actually request that we have this conversation with them as an agenda item? Could we do that sort of thing?
So, so a couple things have happened at the end of the year, and, uh... Norman and staff has seen, uh, cut and paste errors for quite a while.
From Dale, in rat?
In rat, in rat?
Those are special rats that cause blighting, in rat.
And then, uh, as we trained, new people, Cecilia came on board, she kept the assignment, actually Dick used to monitor the, the LCRA. So Cecilia's been monitoring the LCRA and coming back with some tracking forms, things that have been... One of the things that we all know is, boy, your advocacy isn't necessarily my advocacy in timing. They had a particular frustration saying that they had things to do before the automatic session went down. The automatic session was a little uncertain as it went down, uh, but they had a November and a December LCRA meeting. Uh, the item we just looked at tonight was at the November meeting of the LCRA. There was subsequently a December meeting. We did not get the document. Cecilia wrote it up the first time, from having been present at the LCRA meeting. We did not get the document from, from LCRA until the time when, when, uh, Michelle was assembling the mailing to come to us for that meeting. Let me say, that prompted a visit, at my request of SLDC management to my office, to show what we had been received, show the flaws and what we've been receiving, and... to show what we had been received, show the flaws and what we've been receiving. And, uh, it was in the interval between, uh, also was in the, between the first meeting we had in January and the second meeting, and said, you're going to fix all this stuff. Uh, so if you remember the last meeting we had, we had a blighting study that was in Alderman, Cone's ward, and Dale came and made some presentations using certain materials, uh, because I refused them. Because the materials that we had gotten submitted were incomplete. And so we met with them and had them, the maps revised so we could make a presentation. That has stuck. Otis has promised me that they're now going to do things on a timely basis at their meeting. Uh, so that's a checkmark. I'm happy about that. We'll go on and...
Will they actually adhere to that, Don?
Uh, get a little better.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, because in all factual work, there's a little bit more, we do have some customer service aspects, even though we might get frustrated. Uh, there's a little bit more, because now the proof of how they're going to behave is going to be at the start of a session and development. So there's a little bit more, you know, there's a little bit more ability to send it back to the office. This is an understatement, send it back when you're not at such a crunch time as we do this time.
I, I'm partly asking because I don't know what's going to happen in the new session, but I could end up chairing neighborhood development again. Here's the bill that comes from Dale. So I just want to be clear.
You know how much of a fan you are of FLC.
Yeah. So I mean, the, the, I'll, I'll tell you, because, um...
I...
The, 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 so David's taught me some stuff about the blighting as we are. Is, is, I really am a big advocate that, that blighting should be a further refined and standardized thing. So that the, the, uh, West County Mall can't be a site that was blighted. Uh, that downtown Clayton can't be blighted unless it's something for rich. Uh, I, I will say, um, you know, downtown Clayton blighted two buildings that were short buildings. Now, they were shorter than I may run. Blighted them, passed them. Uh, and also at the same time, uh, said, oh, and they'll get twenty years of tax abatement. So there wasn't really, there was also wasn't really, as you heard and Roman talked about, the financial practice really responsible with the SLDC. They're getting better about matching what the development is going to cost, what the development's going to produce to customize tax abatement. Uh, and, uh, City Clayton, you know, when they first did that blight, just said, oh, we'll give them twenty years. We'll allow any of that type analysis. So that analysis of the financial practice is getting up, of the sloppiness to getting things cracked out, uh, so much as these cut and paste errors and forgetting the things. Uh, the next topic is blight.
Well, it's just, I didn't feel comfortable, I said this during, you know, the deliberation earlier, I didn't feel comfortable when the city of Clayton did that.
Right.
You know, and certainly, I think, you know, if we're going to start casting stones into other people's homes, we need to make sure that we're, you know, cleaning up our own.
Yeah, with one, yes.
Which I know, because I've been part of these discussions for many years now, you know, I know that that's the direction that we're heading in, and, you know, I'm, I'm a part of that, and I'm happy that we're having those discussions.
And, and in a philosophical role for government, uh, the city of St. St. Louis, that's sixty-two square miles, is the urban core that has had disinvestment. So if we're using incentives as a society and a state, we ought to be using incentives to go and help repair those areas, uh, and not do the, the, the West County Mall.
And remember, we are still in session, just so that we know that.
All on the record.
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted, just wanted to say that at that moment, while we're taking a breath. With that, I'll entertain emotions. Adern?
So do.
And that was on second, and adjourned. We have the meeting scheduled for March the sixth, I think, six?